Now in the June 90, 2024 Select Board Meeting. At six o'clock. Do we have adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. So Vermont is now going to do a child care. But I want to say a contribution. Contribution. And the town has to make a decision. About if they're going to put the bill for all of it. For each of the employees, or if they are going to give some to the employees, have employees pay some. And the town pay the rest. It's like forty-four cents. How do you like to get this something? So we'll bring that up just before the fund out.
Yep.
Child care contribution.
Yes.
I've received, since the agenda, I've received a driveway payment. An expedition right away, then I will. We'll add on to it. The other thing is I'm going to bring up an amendment to the. Sales agreement for the floors. Anyone else? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Somebody from there, a motion to approve and accept any further discussion, change it, sector. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
By my post. No carry. So are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Comments from the community? Monica?
Nope.
Okay. By behalf of you with us. Correspondence, we received a. Just some information that I can pass around from the LTC. Member guide, a summary of benefits that they sent. To us. You also received the notice from the State of Vermont Department of Taxes. Stating that they are giving us a 2024 re-pleasal order. Because our coefficient of dispersion, our CFP, is. Twenty point six two, it can't fall below twenty. And our CLA is seventy-eight point seventeen percent. But we have already been proactive in trying to get. A appraisal form, you're just signing an amendment contract. So we should be good, but this is an official notice. So if the board doesn't, is okay with it, we're going to move the project, this report up. To the agenda. Kurt, you're up.
Okay, great. It's a little tough for me to hear. So with FEMA, the. We had received our first payment from FEMA. That went all the way through the system. FEMA. Closed out one of our projects. It went to the state of Vermont. State of Vermont forwarded. The grant paperwork to be signed. Linda did sign it, and I believe Belinda, you sent it in. Is that correct?
Yeah, we did have to initial it, so yes, we did send it in.
Okay, terrific. So the good news is that we've actually gotten one FEMA. Project went from end to end. So at this point, we know the system works, which is, which is great. It was for a massive amount of money, forty-five hundred dollars. That was for the. The fire department, a mitigation project for the fire department. So they could lift the compressor. Five feet off of the ground. Although it was a small amount, I think it was a win because we saw something go all the way from A to Z. There are two other projects that have fallen into mitigation. They were not mitigation before, but we do now have an opportunity. One of them is for the School Street Culvert. That culvert has, as you know, has not been placed yet. But FEMA will. Pay for mitigation, which will be a wing walls and a cement. Waterway. So it'll be an upgraded culvert to. Forty-eight inch culvert, and it will have poured cement wing walls on either side of it. This is a project that Linda and Lucian are following up on. With engineering. So that's, that's great news that we can actually harden that, that site. The plan, as I understand it, is to not do the installation until. The. Flatiron Road is completed. Otherwise, we'll be, there'll be no place to detour traffic during the culvert placement. The section, second project that has. Is eligible for mitigation is with the Parks and Rec. We. The, it's about fifty thousand dollars in claim. For Parks and Rec that was turned down by policy by. Our municipal insurance company and was picked up by FEMA. And that is for all of the rec equipment and so forth that was lost. In the, in the equipment shed, backstop and so forth. The mitigation would double that money to a hundred and two to a hundred and three thousand dollars for the project. Which would include raising up the parking lot. To, to the FEMA specification. And then placing a brand new shed on the parking lot itself. Raised another three feet on top of the parking lot. With poured cement foundation. Linda is looking into. If that is something allowable by the state. To actually raise up the parking lot that far. But I did see an email today where it looks like the town zoning. Can be cleared, there is a town zoning limitation of building on a floodplain. But in this case, this is not being used by. Residents and it would be allowable, as I understand it, Linda.
From who?
So.
Who's that email from?
I'm sorry?
Who is the email from?
I think, I think it was from, I think it was from you.
From.
Okay. And so we're looking into the state to see if we can raise up the parking lot. My feeling is, in working with mitigation, is even if the state says, no, you can't do it. We should still get a bid on the project without doing it. Because what I have seen in the past is if the state steps in and says something can be or cannot be done. They tend to adhere to that. So they would back off on their requirement if the state says, no, you can't raise it. So the mitigation would include raising it, putting the shed on it. Getting a, getting a quote on a shed. And getting a quote to put some riprap around the shed, not on the riverbank, but just around the shed. Which would act as a breakwater if a flood were to occur again. I think this is, you know, hopefully well worth doing. It would certainly harden the. The wreck field in the parking lot. And at this point. FEMA mitigation is willing to do so. Not finalized as of yet, because the next step is for us to. Give bids to FEMA. They're not looking necessarily for. A, a money amount up or down. They're just looking for the bids that they can plug into their amount. Their award amount, as long as it does not exceed fifty-one thousand dollars. So that's good, and all of the projects at this point are closed out. With the exception of Manly Road. And as I understand it, Manly Road, the, the. Department, the highway department has ordered the culvert, and if it comes in, if it's available, they will get it in this week. And that will allow us to close out everything. From Wilkens' perspective. For all of the FEMA projects. So that's where we're at with FEMA this week.
So I talked to Dylan, and he asked me to write letters to. The people who lived on Manly Road because they were going to have to close the road, which I know, but. He's doing it on Monday because he felt like he needed to give him some more. He needed to give him some time because he's got to close the road.
Oh, gotcha, okay. I think that that's okay, that's okay. Because I don't have my next meeting with FEMA till next Tuesday at the earliest. And Linda, thank you for the photos of the Pond Road Bridge. That's the final step in getting the Fed Highway Grant closed.
And you'll have a estimate on Friday for this ball field.
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
You will have an estimate on Friday for the ball field.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Great news, great news.
And I'm going on vacation.
So we're going to go eat and then sleep. Deb drove all the way here and we're cooked, we're done, it's over.
Hopefully talking to you.
All right, take care, thank you.
Say hi to Deb.
Will do.
Okay, the School Street Water Reserve Bridge. Last week, I handed out to everyone. Some paperwork to review, invited method, two people from the water. Or the water, School Street Water System. And. You authorized my sending those to our attorney. And I sent you the response. They sent a letter tonight saying, as residents and users of the School Street Water System, we request that the board review the following documents. That are relevant to the operation and maintenance of the system. The nineteen sixty-five agreement with the Woods property, the nineteen eighty-two agreement outlining responsibilities of the water. Users of the town and the town. And the two thousand ten agreement describing structure of administration. And the attorney said. I think, so I asked him to review the operations and ask, I asked him if. He felt that the town was binding. To these documents, so because they originally. Were executed by the Wilkens School District, not the town. And that was the question. And he says that, I think this question probably would stop most applicants if it was on a bar, see, and my first inquiry is to try and figure out what kind of document this is. Is this some sort of binding agreement, was it a statement of policy? It isn't a memorandum of understanding. I think it is a policy statement of the Wilkens School District at the time this water system was created in August of nineteen eighty-two. I cannot conceive of any way that this policy binds the town. The town was not a party to this policy statement, and it is not in the nature of a covenant or easement that binds the town or any of the current users of the water system. However, because this is a water system, there may be other laws and regulations I'm not aware of that would. Require the town to maintain the system, that would have nothing to do with the lack of. Any contractual obligation or part of that. So. I can tell you, it all came about because. They felt that we fixed Mr. O'Driscoll's water system this spring. To the tune of two thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. They're claiming on one of these papers that. The property owner should assume responsibility for. Anything from the shut-off, the town, to the, to, on the property owners, I am, they're responsible for fixing that. So they were not happy that this bill was put against. The School Street Water Users Account, which is a. Enterprise account, it's not a town general fund account, it's an enterprise account, just like the transfer station, it's not supposed to use taxpayers' money, the users are supposed to support it in the making of itself. So they were not happy that this went against it. But there's also a quick way to that property in nineteen ninety-four. It says that. The town will supply the water to that. Will furnish, in addition to laying. In the pipeline. A grantee, that's the school. Will furnish water to the house of the grand tour. Mr. O'Driscoll's house, free of charge on the day of this deed, as long as the sewer disposal system is maintained on the property of the grand tours. So it was a trade between the school district to supply water to that home in exchange for allowing the lease deal to be on that property. Because they have no place to replace it, so there's a little tug of war here going on. So I don't know what the board wants to do. About that. Thinking from this whole problem, it seems like we maybe should think about. Having our own ordinance as a town for the School Street Water Users. You know, all this was done by the school, none of this was done with town. I don't know what I thought you might know.
And ordinance isn't a bad idea, because you could, with the basic stuff, like fees, the interest. Who pays to fix stuff? Put that all laid out, and then. If your problem, you could have it go and have the town vote on it, then it would be. In there, non-tingle, then say anything against one of the others going on a vote.
Could it be an ordinance or a policy?
An ordinance. It carries more away.
Best if it's voted on.
Well, an ordinance isn't necessarily voted on, a select board adopts an ordinance.
It's in public hearing.
In a public hearing, commonly. The select board adopts it, but the voters have the right to ask for. They don't like it. I just don't feel like that it should. So back when Belinda was on the board, they tried to give that whole system to the School Street users. They wanted nothing to do with it. But I don't want it to turn into a liability of the town or the taxpayers.
And, and if we go with them saying that. They shouldn't have to have this money taken out of the account that pays for the water system, you know what I'm saying? We collect rents, pay for any repairs and stuff that we have to do, it's not like the town makes money off of this. It's, we try to keep it a wash.
Yeah, whatever they pay for their monthly rent goes into this one account. You know, and, and we set the rate every year in August. But maybe we should be setting a rate that also includes. A rate for some upkeep, you know, more maintenance or. Of the system.
Doesn't.
But keep it, keep it, not going to be bad.
Doesn't, doesn't, the spring, they have to change that, that was up there every year to anyways? You got to change some floats or something up there, same thing.
They said the floats are needing replacement.
That's a yearly, a year or two, same. That should be on yearly, a two-year maintenance.
But because there's so many users who don't follow the state requirements.
I'm like the condo association. Do the condo associations all the time. Where all the maintenance costs for your driveways, your water.
Comes out of fees.
Comes out of fees they take out, or your trash, because they don't want that. No, they lose out the building, or the condo association paid it. Or the association paid for that.
See, they seem to think that there should be a huge amount in there because it's full of collective money. And didn't do very many repairs to it, but when the town, the school gave it to us, they didn't say we had to, this property, they didn't say we had to maintain, or they didn't. Their agreements they had with people didn't come over with the deed.
There's nothing in the deed, I sent, I sent the attorney. Deed when the school gave it to us, and there's actually no mention whatsoever of having to be bound by that system.
The town, it's the school district, you O'Driscoll's house. That's the only thing.
Yeah.
But basically, the school district. Has to keep their agreement with O'Driscoll.
But we're using it now as a town, that's where our lease deal is used to having. And for the livelihood.
So are we, as a town, paying? As a user?
We are not, and that's one thing they'd like us to do.
And what makes sense that.
They would like it. They would like the town.
A lot of it. That happens a lot of times, it's just how you build up your funds is, you got your town loans paying to it to build up your reserve, your maintenance line.
I think we should pay as much as they do because we are on the system. And probably the library is on the system.
Well, all of it here is.
Right.
Not, we're not for why, we're not on the why.
No.
We're just on the sewer.
Yes.
We, we could not, as a public building, be on the spring. I will, but they want us to be on, so they, and I, I really likely change this because I was a guest. In two thousand eight, at town meeting. They, they amended a motion. About the waste, about the water, which says that. It says somewhere here that the. And the town will make payments for the use of the O'Driscoll property separate to the water fund. And the voters approved that, what does that mean?
So basically, you're supposedly. From what I can understand, we're supposed to be paying for O'Driscoll's water use.
That's right, that's the thing when you stick to it, so.
Which would mean that we book for, for that two thousand dollar bill, right, is that what they're saying?
Can you speak louder?
Well, that would mean that they think we should pay that two thousand dollar repair, was that?
No, they think Mr. O'Driscoll should pay.
Well, yeah.
So basically, the line is here from his home to the main lot.
Yes, well, I actually talked to Bernard today, there was a crack in one of the top of privacy.
In the yard?
In the yard.
Which was affecting Phil. So how did he even hear?
Was affecting the home.
Phil, Phil.
Because he wouldn't have water, because it leaked the channel.
Well, that's part of the system, it's not a personal thing.
No, 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 but what I mean is, it's, it was weak at Mr. O'Driscoll's. It was not a rush.
That also the loss of water was probably, that could also affect the rest of it too, we have a leak in one spot.
Well, right now, the account shows a negative balance of four hundred and ninety, no, five hundred and four dollars. It's in the hole. Which basically means the tax. The general fund is offsetting that. But at the same time, they have five hundred and ninety dollars in the link.
Four hundred and ninety.
How much?
Four hundred and ninety.
Yeah, four hundred, they have five hundred and four in the hole, but they have four hundred and ninety in the link of water.
It should be paid by the end of June. Because we don't bill them until, well, it's from January to June. So we bill them, I think she billed them in May, and then I noticed something wrong with it, so we billed them in June. And so they have thirty days, so they should pay by the end of June.
So what is each user paying?
Hundred and fifty dollars every six months.
So that means right now, the town would be owing that hundred and. What did you just say, like, hundred and sixty?
Hundred and fifty for two months, so that would be for, there's two payments a year, so that would be three hundred.
Right, so basically, we're going with this agreement, then we have to pay that hundred and fifty.
That would be a important, that would be a important decision.
Well, that's what the town voted, so that's no decision. That's no decision. That's what the town voted for.
I don't know, I would think we'd have to ask a lawyer about that. I mean, so it's just kind of weird that the town would pay itself.
When you're paying.
It happens all the time in towns, where they have wastewater plants. Your water, a wastewater plant has to pay a water bill if it's on to them.
Yeah, I'm sure we will have to. Here, now when we.
There, one bill, you have down offices, down water system, you have to pay it.
The energy double.
But this, this is, this is not. I don't want to say it's not a legal system, but it's not. We're, we are supplying Mr. Driscoll with water. So we can have our septic on his property. That's an agreement that the school made. Long time ago. The town, when they took over the property. It wasn't in the deed about that, but we just honor it, pretty much.
I mean, from what Linda just read, the town voted to do that.
Yeah, in two thousand eight, I, I don't think, did you know when you were voting? And I'd like, I'd like.
I wasn't going to the meeting in two thousand eight.
I think that story still lasts that that article they read down at town meeting. Probably might be a more, more point if you look at. Uh, the deed, as long as there's a septic, you know, then. You know, if the septic system is built, then. That, the whole thing is a moot point.
Right, because we won't lose that septic anymore.
Right, but you still owe that bill until then.
The town was never paying a dime into that account.
Okay, moving forward, um, I mean, that's what it says, I'm not going to go backwards. Are you going to make a motion to make, to, for the town to pay three hundred dollars for this year, towards it?
I would say this thing was voted on in two thousand eight, we're gonna have to honor it from that day.
Where are you gonna get the money for it?
Get my phone.
No, it's came up.
There is no money in the general fund. Michael?
I have no ideas, um, I, I tend to agree with Kurt, it seems like at least, you know, July until the. Septic system is in place, we, we probably should be paying. You know, even if it were just half, right, because we're not using the water, but we are renting the land. For the septic system, we should be paying something. Um, but as far as where it comes from. I, I'm at a loss, I don't know. I don't know where we could pull that money from. Again, this all disappears the second we have our, our wastewater system in place, anyway.
Why come now? Since the vote was in two thousand and eight?
Because. They're upset with the two thousand dollars, having to fix the lot, the main, fix the line from the main to Old Driscoll's house.
That had to be fixed, and if, even if it was on Phil's property, we would have fixed it.
But.
So. So it should come out of that fund, because they're one of the users.
Well, this is the problem, does it define from the main line, is only fixed by the. People as users, or is it from the main line to your house, your responsibility?
It's ever been specified. It's fine, it's fine to the ordinance generally for this.
So since we don't have the ordinance. Sounds like we have to pay. But that has to come out of the fund, so it doesn't. Taxpayers aren't affected.
So that amounts to five thousand one hundred dollars. Seventeen years, seventeen years of three hundred dollars.
I, I don't know that we should pay since two thousand and eight, there has to be some onus on the water users to have. Kept up with that, I mean, who's been doing the bookkeeping? And, and been uh. Maintaining that account.
The select board after, there was, the select board in charge after the vote in two thousand and eight. They never did anything.
So what are you suggesting, Michael? What are you suggesting?
I'm thinking that as we enter this new fiscal year, we should be prepared, and I realize we don't have a budget item for this, but we should be prepared to pay. You know, at least a hundred and fifty dollars a year. For the, I'll call it lot rent. Of, of Old Driscolls for our sewer system. Um, but as far as from two thousand eight to now. Again, I, I believe there needs to be some onus on whatever the association that is in charge of. This water system. And, and again, it seems, it seems like that, that association doesn't exist. You know, they're, they're.
There is no association. They were trying from the school, they tried to get, get rid of it, to the town, tried to get rid of it. Nobody wants it, it's thrown on the town as a. I don't know, I mean, it's kind of hard to say, well, we're gonna just take your water away from you. I mean, I mean, that's a hard thing, but they did, there was some. A lot of up and down and fighting about. The town saying, we don't want a water system. And then it just got dropped. But there needs to be some clarity, the board, so.
I, I, no, not to be moving your up, I think what we've got to do. Is basically. Have them. Are using the water. Take it over.
They won't.
The only one that won was Old Driscoll.
No, 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 there was a big fight. About Phil versus Phil and everything and.
Oh, no, I, I talked to these people this weekend. The only one that doesn't want to do it is Mr. Driscoll, because he doesn't want to pay.
Well, he wouldn't be paying, we would be paying.
Right.
If they.
Now, now if we go by it. If we go by that. But then when you put your wastewater system in, then we're not liable.
Correct.
So then he would be paying. So he's the only one that's. Sticking the money. The rest of them want it.
It's very strange, they didn't want to give it to them.
Well, now they do.
Well, okay.
So.
Can we, can I ask you to uh? Meet with them again and come back to us, because I would be willing to.
I'd be happy to, hopefully give it to them.
But we also have a match, Brian Dunbar too. He's on, Brian Dunbar.
He. Used to be Steve's property.
Well, would you ask them if they're interested again in considering their um. Taking it over?
Taking it over, whatever they do for association, it's their head.
And well, otherwise, we are going to uh write some kind of ordinance. Uh, dispels things out, and that, and we're going to be in control, they're not going to be influenced.
So my understanding is the last time we did talk about them taking it over, they wanted money. They wanted a fund to go with that system.
I think what they wanted was what the fund had been.
But the school had that, not us.
So they would have to go to the school and say.
No, the school watched all hands of it. After the last time they cared it.
So where is the money?
There is no money.
I'm willing, I'm willing to give five thousand of our money to take it over.
As long as it ever comes back. As long as it never comes back.
Yes.
I, I can go to them and see if I can get a ball of meat. Tuesday. Fifteenth. Everyone, hopefully. And you said the other guy's name is Brian?
Brian Dunbar. He lives in, uh, Sidney Lowes' old place.
Okay, I mean, I know him. And see if I can get him off together and say, fifty-five thousand, just make association, take the damn thing off.
Do we give them five thousand? I thought you said a thousand.
Wow, I haven't made a motion.
Oh, yeah, I just said I would.
I would just get rid of it. Just get rid of that headache.
Yeah, but the guy needed association first, before we do this.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And one last question. Say we did go down this path and we gave them a fund of some amount and they had an association and. They managed it poorly. And it needed something, you know. I would want to make sure that any kind of transfer, which we don't have a legal right to anyway, because the agreement's not with us. I would want to make sure that there is no liability to the town. For us to supply water to them, if they manage their fund poorly and, and it needs something they can't afford, that's not on us.
Like cooking up our well.
Right.
Well, uh, it would have to. It would have to all go through an attorney.
Right. Yeah, there'd have to be agreement between them. Well. They have to even get the s- school board in.
They want nothing to do with it.
Yeah, but if they sign off legally with the school board, then there's nothing you can do.
They don't, they don't have to sign off legally, they just gave it up. And the town took it over.
Where's, where's the documentation?
Where's the paperwork stating that?
Well, because we took over the problem.
We took over the well, St. John's, St. John's, are you ready to go in person? Yeah. It was there in spring.
Okay. So as long as we get them to sign an agreement with us illegally. Own their own association, fund all the repairs by then. We can wash our hands of it.
We would have to give them an easement.
Right.
Along Ferrero Street. And also it's on our Westover's property, which will be on in soon. Um, so we'd have to give them an easement to that.
You're saying if you need to get rid of it.
So the town had in mind a long.
So just don't offer them anything yet, but just say, would you consider it, and. You know, with a small amount in a file, and um. It may be think that I should check the, the people in the buyout to be sure that. All of that will work too.
But no, I build them. Should they pay, would you? Jamie, where did you?
I didn't want.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure, just.
It won't happen.
I didn't know how it was break it off.
It won't happen overnight.
Okay.
No, it'd probably take a year. So I'll set up your time to invest.
Anybody else want to say anything on the subject? Move on. Okay, let's move on to the select board's review and analysis.
So Michael, I didn't send you the latest um bounty and um. For the town and the transfer station and the. Budget versus actual for each of them, I could go send it to you right now if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you.
No problem.
So then while she's doing that, we'll take up two of these easy ones, um. One is a driveway permit for Dan and Lisa Holcomb. Three two five Elmer Pond Road, they wanted to put a. Um. Driveway in on their. Lower part of the property. Between the bridge and the house. Uh, Dylan has signed on it. It looks actually like it would be safer. Than their existing driveway.
Are they going to discontinue the other driveway, or will they have two?
It didn't say.
I think we should have discontinued the other.
But I don't know, it didn't say that.
Or they. See, it doesn't say if it's making a move to a horseshoe. Or discontinuing the original. That's it. The nasty driveway. On its driveway. That would be a lot safer, but.
Yeah.
Then they have to.
I noticed the property was for sale. The property. With the holes. So they're having that ground on this driveway permit, is it a?
It's going to be that with Dylan, and Dylan signed off on it, and apparently it's um. They're moving it so it'd be safer. That's what I understand.
Right.
Because that was one of the things, I guess the realtor told them, is they thought they'd have a different, they'd sell it better if they had a different.
Right.
One they got. Worse than.
So that, that's the only background I know, and he's called me several times to make sure that it's been approved, and I said Dylan's approved it, we just need the. The town's approval.
I. I think we should amend it and then discontinue or tear up that previous. Driveway.
I think he is, uh.
But no, I think it should be in the documents, because. Because if you don't state it. Then they can start using it. Where if it's stated, it has to be taken out. Think I'd make that a condition.
But can I have Dylan follow up with me?
And just, just looking through the highway standards here as well, are we sure that they're not within, for example, ten feet of a property line and, and anything like that?
Well, they have three acres, so I think they're okay, and then the next to her neighbor. Um, I think I agreed to this, he did talk to them.
So, so the closest boundary is down by the Elmer Pond Bridge.
Yeah.
And um. I think, uh, is that how the bournes used to go, whose property is that?
Uh, Graves and Bournes, yeah.
So it would be the town's forest, so.
I think the graves have a right away there to their hundred and thirteen acres across the river or something. Margery Everton and now Devon.
Yeah. Which they even have to you.
Okay, so uh, do we have a motion to approve this, the condition, or? Do you need to see it, Michael?
Uh, no.
I can add that, uh, love, uh, Dylan put it up, do you need to see it?
Uh, no, I, I think that it's fine, I, I would make the motion to approve it as long as the old driveway is discontinued.
One second.
A second.
Other comments? All those in favor? Close, so carry on.
It's a bottom where you approve it, you can write that on there, old driveway must be discontinued, yeah, and then you go to me.
What you do it, you can ensure it's better than that, I'm. I try.
The other one is an application for a right of way, um. Under the road, right, this is the Northeast Community Broadband, they're starting on, um. That section of Walke that, uh, we gave, uh, some market money to them, it connects in Raspberry. But there's a small section that, um. There's a small section with no poles. So they need to go underground.
Is it near the Raspberry line or?
Um, well, they have a map here, but you can't really. Sometimes that. There's a real map. Right, so it's, um, this is the line, the Raspberry line. And it goes from there to here, the place that stands the hole. Where the red is, it's now the key, the both circles and the poles.
Right.
They need to go underground.
As long as they're out of the town right away. Railway, I have no problem with it.
Well, Dylan wrote on here, a middle depth of three feet with flagging, one inch. Well, Dylan wrote on here, a middle depth of three feet with flagging one inch over the pond. Um, but it is in our right of way because that's why they have this permit. It's, it's a permit to allow them to be in our right of way. Install and maintain approximately six hundred and eighty-seven feet of. Fiber optic cable encased in the pond along the. Westerly side of town, the other of this, the pivot on the. Something that.
Yeah, I can see the map and see what they're doing. I think we're going to run into the same problem up. When you live with AT&T when they said they put their line. Three feet under and went through the right there and tore it up.
Well, we have this permit for a reason. We've had it for years to allow people to be able to. Um. Excavate in our right of way. And there's no holes, so we can't go on the poles.
Right. Yeah.
I would say if we want them, we're going to have to allow them. It's for the internet. Right? It's for the broadband.
No, I always say this. People think of that teachers name. It's that teacher's name, it must be at the. Local school.
Has lived on Town Hill?
Yeah. Almost at the Christ for Iran. That's where this issue of the telephone poles. And he wouldn't allow putting telephone poles.
Oh, I.
Chinese military units.
Are in the way.
Are in the way.
Oh, he used to live on the side of the yard. That's what he does. So you do cross it?
No, he does right over the line.
Oh, yeah.
He didn't want.
I know, I still love.
She promised.
All right, um.
I, I guess if he's going, if they're going to tell him a minimum of three feet and have it marked. Guess there's not much we can do other than that, just. What are we going to continue with our agreement on the, uh, optic five?
So I wrote permit approved with, with the condition that existing driveway has been moved, discontinued. I'll report it and send it. I believe the N L upside. Do we have a motion on the, uh, right of way explanation permit?
I'll make the motion that they, you know, we approve the permit, uh, as long as they follow the applicable highway standards and, and best practices as far as protecting their, their lines.
Give a second.
One second.
All that's in favor. Almost. Okay. All right, let's move on. It's, um, who's going on? I don't know. Are you going to work on the, um?
About?
Well, well, we're going to go with. Twenty-one is first.
So, uh, good news. Let's do good news first. Um, the, um, bounty and the profit and loss for the transfer station shows us that. Through, um, I don't know why it says twenty-eight, but it should say nineteen, um. We have, um. Had a net income this year of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. So the transfer station is in very good shape, I think. And, um, I'm hoping my two workers will keep up the good work. Moving on to the town. As you can see, um. I would like to say that. You're doing well, but I'm in. Um, but you know, the flood has made it quite. Was a, um, interesting year, fiscal year. And as you can see on the balance sheet, it says our net income is minus seven hundred and twenty-two thousand. And that is, um. I would say. Once I move some money over from the flood loan. A million dollar loan back in, it probably won't show as bad, but I have not accessed any of that money yet. Which I will do before the end of the year. So we can balance it out and not show it as a deficit for the town, but a flood occurrence, basically. Um, if you look at the profit and loss. Most of the, uh. Departments have had a lead problem this year, uh, going over budget. Um, some are under, which is good news. One of the things, um, I wanted to let you know is on page seven, under Town Clerk and Treasurer. My budget is under about nineteen thousand right now. It will probably be, um, under a little less than that because we have, um. One more page, we, and that I will get paid and Edie will get paid. But the bills have all been paid from June that I have. Um, one of the things. I would like to do because Edie is retiring the end of July. And she is going to be working a little part-time to train. The person I had thought of and asked to come in and help me in the future, and that's Deanna Edie. She does live in Walke. She actually lives up the road from me. In full disclosure. She's not married to my brother, but she lives with him. So I wanted to let you know. She works in the capstone right now. She will get that notice the end of July, same company, work full-time. Always first. One of the things is. I don't think it's working with only. Twenty-eight hours a week that Edie was giving me. I would like to change it back to the thirty-four that I'm open. And what will happen is. My hours will hopefully go back to the thirty-four. Probably won't, but hoping. That's what I get paid for. So I won't be doing forty hours a week. But one day a week I will have off and she will have off. So we will be there three days to be together and one day alone after I'm trained. Not immediately, but after I play. She has, uh, essentials. The only thing I think she's a little weakened is QuickBooks. But that's easily trainable because. I kind of was trained and as Linda was trained on the job. QuickBooks is an easy, um. Program that you can learn pretty, pretty well, pretty fast. Uh, I wanted to tell you also that because I have that amount left in my budget, I would like to take eleven thousand of that. And put it over, put it in a fund balance to bring it over to New Year because Deanna will have to have, um. Insurance. A single insurance. And there is no money in the budget because I didn't know what Edie's plans were. Um, second. She would be getting the same rate as Edie. Edie's getting twenty dollars an hour. So she would be the same. But she would be more hours. She would be, um, six more hours a week. So there would be a little increase. So if I brought the eleven thousand and it's from. The assistant town clerk, there's going to be about four thousand left in that. On that item right there under the town clerk. I didn't use any of the bookkeeping services for audit a thousand. The insurance, um, I changed my insurance from a family to a two-person because I'm covering myself and my son. So that might, it leaves five thousand in there. And then under temporary help. I didn't, Deanna was able to go under the assistant town clerk when she helped me out on different areas. So we didn't have to use that temporary help money. So there's a thousand there. So that would be eleven thousand. That would help with the new budget because I am going to have to hire somebody. And. Edie was on retired, but I'd like to get somebody younger. And somebody who would have a future here to the town. Because I'm not going to be here forever. And she's younger than me. Any questions?
You said that, um, again, you're asking.
Thousand. Right now it's nineteen and I think we're going to probably use less than two grand in there. But. Just to be sure, I, I only might ask for a lot. And I think a lot will move now to the new budget recovery. Any questions? Okay, so moving on, we, uh, the last thing we have is, um, the assigned fund balance, which I said before. Uh, the only thing I think is off after talking with Linda is the ARPO funds. I thought we were, that with this, it means we'll just send it into the general fund. But Linda said there's a specific amount incentive for the general fund, so I'm going to have to rework the last line. Um. But and also the, the interest is the town's. It's not really ARPO funds. Any interest we made off ARPO funds, we can keep and just put in the general fund. So I will remove that. Uh, but as you can see. What we have left in each of the categories. Um, and if you have any questions, I can answer them. The old schoolhouse, um, renovation, that three, six, six, six point two five was before we got the grants. For the architect and for, um. For the, the planning, planning grid. And that was, um, money that, uh, the town. Put, put out there. You know, because we didn't get those grants until like the end of two thousand twenty-three, right? So two thousand, early two thousand and twenty-three, when they were working July, I think till August, we were on town tonight.
I think one of the grants, the previous grant was said that.
Yeah.
They had made a portion of it.
Right. And the community garden that's still going, even though Deb has retired, um, so they have a balance of sixteen hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. The library, I keep that separate. That it has to do with poppy funds and everything. It's like a CD and it's a reserve money they have. The capital, um, reserve, the eighteen thousand that came out is for all the work we've done for this school street bridge. We had to pay the engineering cost limit. Is that what it was?
Five percent of the engineering and right of way costs.
So that's so far as eighteen thousand. And, um, under the fuel cost. I took what the tax.
But, but I thought in the beginning we had, well, we had three on one. And then we've spent, um. So this forty-five thousand almost spent on, um.
That's something you guys made a decision to take out of the capital funds. I'll have to look back. To last year. Boom, I'll look back because I know that was, that was the way it ended up. I think it was forty grand or something. You guys, you got your capital funds or something.
But we're going to take it out of the capital.
Pretty much. Right. I know. I, I'll see what it was. Um. And, oh, and under fuel, sorry, um, fuel costs there, this is what does, uh, the highway went over in fuel and the library. All the other ones were on, but the library went over like a hundred and seventeen dollars and the rest is what the highway went. And most of it was on road. So you, we have sixteen thousand left there. And the town building account. Took all of it, even though a little more than that over. Because we. We have kind of a full containment.
This is our opportunity and this meeting every year is when we. We think we're going to have any extra money in a certain place. This is when we have to assign and we have a. I don't know what the policy is called.
Fund balance policy.
Our fund balance policy, which our CPA in the past helped us, um. Right? And it designates what we do with, uh, bonds at the end of the year, but has to be done before June journey. So this way, when they do the audit or moving forward, we as a board can say we want to put. So much towards a certain area if we want to. You don't have to. I'm thinking that our budget this year doesn't have a lot of anything.
There's no other place I can find.
Um. I wouldn't anticipate, um. It's tight. And I was thinking, um. What do you think about, do you think that we've spent, um, so we haven't done any FEMA. Um. But any FEMA money. So we don't really know what our share is, or where our FEMA share was going to come from.
Well. He estimated two million as well. Right, but we've already parted that with insurance. No, the last meeting he said FEMA is estimating that we're two million. I could be wrong. You do? Okay. I'm saying, I'm pretty sure Chris started it out by saying, and after FEMA has outdone all this, they're talking two million. So. But even if you look on page eight. And you're looking under FEMA, the Town Hill Culver, is already at twenty-four thousand.
It is.
The Town Hill Culver FEMA, it's at twenty-four thousand.
That's a half a million.
Yeah.
I know it's a half a million, but then there's a hundred thousand for. The other, for three of the projects came in just over a hundred thousand and. The. Um, Town Hill came in roughly forty thousand. Uh, we don't have to pay for this fire department damage only to the building. Which got paid by.
A certain amount. Um.
By insurance.
Right. We didn't get a full amount. I can tell you how much we received in actual.
They wouldn't pay for the cleaning.
Right.
And they didn't pay for all of the, um. Town wall repairs. The insurance.
Insurance reimbursement total was two hundred and sixty thousand with zero seventy-six dollars and two cents. But under FEMA of what we paid out between insurance and everything we had to track at the time. If you look on page. Eight, it was four hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Mm-hmm.
So it's way above what, you know. So you, you've already spent this amount. We have. And we haven't got any reimbursement for any of this yet. So that's not my question. My question is, we have to pay, we have to come up with. Uh, seven percent of all the projects. Yep.
Where is that money coming from?
I'm assuming it's going to come from the hundred and twenty-four thousand we had before, that we haven't really used. Remember, we got a hundred and twenty-four thousand this year that had to do with the fee for the flood before. And that is under page one, under FEMA funds miscellaneous growths, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, four up seven point ten.
So that's an income.
That's an income, it's on page one, under grants.
So does that need to be booked somewhere else?
Uh, we'd love to put it in the capital fund, we talked about doing that. I have not done it yet because I haven't moved the money over from the flood.
But will we actually really have that money in the moment?
No, no, it's not paying to, but but no, but basically you're running a deficit with your flood. But you have all this other money that you'd be sticking in there if this flood hadn't happened. It would still got the hundred and twenty-four thousand. But here's the thing, once I access that million dollar loan, the interest starts on it. So I've been holding off until the very end of June to be able, before we start accruing any interest, hoping that by next year, we will get this money from FEMA. I'm serious.
So you don't know that we cannot collect the interest for, we cannot get interest on our loan once the FEMA projects have been obligated.
I know.
And it sounds like from what I've heard, so just about all of them, almost have.
So see, that's why I've been waiting.
Yeah.
Because I have to wait until everything is final. So we're living on two strings, but it's been okay, you know what I'm saying?
So I'm just trying to figure out money so that we can maybe reserve some of that in certain processes.
So after I put the money back into the account, I will send you guys a balance sheet showing you where everything has gone back to and what we have now in all of our accounts and where you can access money. And if it's a capital fund, can't you take um the FEMA uh matches from there because it's essentially a major thing? It's a major asset because you're upgrading all of these. I mean, Flat Iron's being upgraded, Town Hill's being upgraded, I don't know about East Hill, those two projects, but those, the two big ones, but the one big one, Town Hill, is a asset and an improvement. And the capital fund does follow that.
Or we can put it into a assigned fund balance of
We can.
ARPA reimbursement, and then when we're done, we can uh, if there's left over money, we could put it into the capital fund. I think that would be cleaner.
Yeah, whatever you guys wanna do.
Would we have, would we be in any danger if we labeled that fund balance ARPA anything? Is there any way that if the feds did try to claw back the money, they would look at that account?
Yeah, I wouldn't follow ARPA, I would follow the
I think I would like to receive a funds.
Oh, yeah, well, they are FEMA, um, um.
About flood reimbursement.
Yeah, we can call it whatever you want.
I mean, if you call it flood reimbursement, there's nothing touching it to FEMA or anything.
Right, you can say
Or capital improvements.
Yeah, you can say flood reimbursement or just flood money. There it is.
As long as it's clear and what it's designated for.
Right. And then later, the fund balance, we have done this before from one account to another, we move it from one account to another. And you can do that in the future, as long as you do the amount that's in a whole lot. And we did with the town minister in Congress.
So how much money was that again?
It's one twenty-four, four oh seven ten. If you want to believe on the ten cents, you can. Page one, under grants.
One thirty, one down.
It's underneath their, we'll get resilient community fund. That's what we've gotten reversed.
Oh, I see now. Yeah.
I told Edie to put it there, so and we talked at one time about where we're gonna put it. But we just left it there.
So are you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, I I think that's the easiest thing to do.
So I'll make a motion to um place a hundred twenty-four thousand, one and seven dollars in the uh assigned fund balance now under by flood reimbursement.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I oppose, so caring. Um. Coming back to Belinda's request, um how do you feel about that? If someone wanna make a motion, if you have more questions? I mean, we're not in favor of it.
There's two ways to look at it. We can move it over to use for that, or we can run a deficit next year. That that would be what would happen.
Basically, two options.
Which is the thing that I'm not
No, you think I'm a deserter, I didn't know.
I think if we move that, the other thousand, like you discussed, those certain amounts could be and then you can still train.
I I think I need to have an assistant who's going to be here for a while. If we're not in the ropes, it's, you know, we're all gonna retire someday, I hope.
You're always smiling.
And it's an unusual job here, uh, a town with lots of wonderful functions.
Not just gonna lie, I think it's a
But I'm not among the community, are you not? Does anyone wanna make a motion or no?
I'll make the
Mike, if you hear us.
I made the motion that we take the funds that Belinda discussed into another
The fund balance under balance.
I'll second.
Okay, the first and second, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, I oppose, so caring. I handed out, um, thank you, I handed out, um, our our list of money we spent on our ARPA funds on. I'm sorry you're not here, Mike, well, um. But anyway.
I didn't send it to him. He hasn't, yeah.
I'll be quick about this. Remember back in April, we had to do the resolution, um, one of the BLTC, we put um three hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Did a resolution and deposited into the general fund of our salaries. And then blah blah. Um, and I updated this with our um money that we gave to Dylan for uh paving. It came in at forty-five thousand, four twenty. Basically, we have um two things to do tonight. We've made commitments for a certain amount of money um for projects, which we need to put in our fund balance. And we also have thirty-eight thousand, one eighty-two fifty-three plus the interest of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. To decide whether we wanna assign it to anything, whether we wanted to just stay in the general fund because we're going over, probably have a deficit. That's the board's decision.
Should be in the general fund. But we don't want to run into a deficit.
I'm agreeing with you.
Even now, in case a fuel business dropping, I can only see the highway department getting deeper into the hole.
Right, so um so so the money isn't really carried over to next year? It's kind of weird, so if you feel like that you're concerned with fuel costs or something, you would add it to your fund balance and would just be useless of that, otherwise it's just absorbed.
Wasn't there extra in the fuel on?
It's uh
Here is now.
There is right here.
Sixty thousand.
Right.
Would be flipped in the later next year maybe?
So let me first, I'm gonna make a motion uh for the, what we committed to some funding uh to go into the fund balance. Do you have it now, Michael?
Yep.
So um I'm gonna make a motion that we will commit to the fund balance seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and ten cents uh for our schoolhouse engineer. Two thousand eight dollars for our schoolhouse municipal planning grant, which was our share. Twenty-five thousand for the purchase of the town boards. We put in forty thousand dollars, we committed for fund balance for our pointing board, pointing bar taxes. Um uh, we put aside thirty thousand dollars for possible purchase of a parking area. Uh, we committed uh six thousand five hundred dollars to the brick frame, that was to take out the bridge developments out there. And we committed a hundred twenty-five thousand uh for wastewater and brand match, if you receive the northern border experiment. Can we talk about that with you? Do I have a second?
Let's just
Fine.
Probably the brown field one.
We only have it, but not all.
Well, we've done a first one, we've done this too, and we're waiting for
That's that little Merrill strip.
Yeah.
If they wanted sixty thousand for
Father not giving us sixty.
No.
And this is just possible, we're sending the money, if it doesn't happen, it goes back into the fund, we have some we haven't set any signed any agreements or anything.
I'll second your motion, Linda.
We have a first and second, do we have any other questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? So caring. So now we'll move on to the um what do you want to do with the thirty-eight thousand and the eight fourths?
Is that possible to put into our general fund? I'd like to make a motion to kill some of the general fund.
Do you want it to go in this year's general fund or next year's?
We're not running a deficit, so I'd put it into next year's.
And both of them?
Both of them.
You have to say specifically what they'll be used for or just in the general fund?
In the fund.
Do you, do you have a inkling, Belinda, whether um, because we are putting forty thousand next year into the general fund, whether this money will be better used in this year's or next year's, do you have a any feeling?
Well, I don't know if that would have this like little system thing is gonna go. And then if you're sixty grand, it's gonna cover up. So that is my only concern, so if you put it in next year's, it's uh I guess you could say a cushion, in case you go home. Um, I mean, have, I know it's been in the paper, has there been any applicants? No. So are you, are, is this like we're maybe thinking it might have to be more of a full time job?
I had a discussion that I think um I had one pretty good prospective applicant, but uh the hours was a hindrance and um the hours and the hourly wage, due to the fact that they would have to pay twenty-five percent of their health insurance because that's part of our personnel policy. So they didn't feel like it was enough hours and not paid to offset the cost of insurance.
I'd say that most of the industry that's written base, the five percent.
I know, but um we have to come up, we need to come up with a solution because I am gonna stop doing all this stuff with the
So if you offer more hours than me, if you offer more hours than maybe the twenty-five percent wouldn't be so bad because most people pay the twenty-five percent the whole time.
Right. It's because we, the ad was only thirty hours, for thirty hours.
I'm gonna see the amount paid per hour in the one, in the week. Or four hours.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to put uh the balance of the money we have available to bounce to.
What um, whatever happened, we talked once at a meeting a few months ago about trying to create a fund or matching uh, you know, grant matches and things. Did we ever do that? Was that in this year's budget?
No. Right, I remember that too. Are we able, be able to have funds to uh
Would this be an opportunity to do something like that? Could we sign some of this thirty-eight thousand to that?
It could, it's, we'd be matching for the grants for next year.
Would anybody feel if we were to take, say, ten thousand of this and and put it into a fund uh, you know, to do grant matches?
Can you speak up? He wants to know if you uh would be in favor of taking ten thousand out of this thirty-eight um to designate for grant matches that come up that we're not aware of at the time, you know, that assist in a fund. So when you have to make a match to the bridge, while the brick ring was sixty-five hundred dollars, we had to come up with that, we don't have it in our budget. Uh, so if we don't have matches, then we can't fly the bridge.
So what you're asking, Mike, is we make a new line item for grants and put eight thousand, that thirty-two into it? for grants in what, eight thousand and thirty-two into it?
They'll put ten into the ten.
Yeah, ten of the thirty-eight, yes. Taking the remainder of it and putting it in, you know, the general fund.
So put, well, it's almost thirty-nine, but, but um twenty-eight nine in the general fund, put ten towards uh, grant matches for future new items, line items in the budget.
How do you feel about that?
Makes sense, babe.
No, let's go with that. Ten thousand towards a new line item for funds for grants. So we don't have to go into the general budget anytime. You know, the remainder goes into the general fund.
So we have a motion on the floor to put ten thousand dollars towards grant match in the signed fund balance and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents in the general fund uh, starting July first of twenty-four. We have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carry. I think that's it for money. Thank you. Um, so, Melinda wanted to know about the childcare because that's the toward um. I'm not familiar with the law, I just learned about it today, at the meeting. Basically, new law. Employers are required to pay a point four-four percent payroll tax on their employees' wages, starting on July first of twenty-four. This is for, these funds will go towards um childcare contributions. But we also have the option of paying it all ourselves or asking the employee to pay
what else?
Point eleven-one percent uh, uh, that forty-four. And is there someone? Uh, we have to make this decision or?
Um, I, you guys can just talk, I can send everything to you guys about it and you can uh, the first payroll is app on the first meeting in um um, July, so you can make a decision at that July meeting and then the following week we would pay the overall on the list.
How much do you think would that make off of?
So basically, um, this is what we figured out on um, E D did on twenty grand. Um, forty, I don't know, it's like um person would be, if he total, the time would be eighty-eight dollars and she would pay um third of that, so, you know. I think it was twenty-two dollars. Because they're eleven cents, you can only pass on eleven cents of this to the employee. Or the, the employer can take all forty-four cents or they can pay the thirty.
So the question is, at our next meeting, after Melinda sends the information, does the town want to pay the whole point four-four percent? Or do we want to ask the employee to pay twenty-one-one percent? And do you, and will that be adjusting our personnel policy in the meeting?
I don't think so, um, because it's, it's like, like Connecticut. It's not like a benefit or anything, this is happening because the state had brought a package many years. Uh, they think that childcare needs to be, um, I guess you could say uh taken care of with more money, and this is where they decided to do it, to tax the employees and the employer. And apparently, self-employed people are still, are going to have to do it too. Have you heard anything about it, Michael?
I haven't, but I'm working for the accountant later this week, so I will be educated.
Yeah. And most self-employed, you guys won't have to pay until I think I don't know if it's quarterly or if it's at the end of the year when you file your, you know, income tax. But because it's an employee, it works for a company that we pay in taxes now, they're making us do it the same as like state taxes, quarterly. And yeah, E D went to a um webinar about this, and she said she was more confused afterwards than before. So I'm not really sure how much we really know, but we did get a printout, which I gave to Linda, and I have another one, so I will send it all out to you guys. And apparently, it, it's something they voted on this year at legislature.
Will we go on? It's got, big Joe, and there's no way to get him to get it.
Yes, I understand it was one of the ones that the governor showed and then legislature came back and passed it, or the override of the veto. That's what I understand. We never knew what was going to happen.
Okay, keep ready for that, um. Royal County Sheriff's, contact. Voters approve the payment from Mr. Board and then it's been the time down. What? Now?
You gotta approve it if they approve it, what's that, it sounds like.
It has to do with the words, if you don't like what they're wording, and it's like you want something more, a lot of it.
Yeah, more hours, it just, more hours, and get on the fifth evening, slow the speed down. Let's go sign.
This is for the um. It's dispatch, we just want to score the picture. So, um, well, we're moving on to the loyal channel agreement between the San Joaquin and Hyde Park. I have talked to Dean Garcia. He has been taking dogs, um, but he can only take one at his home, so he hasn't been able to take anymore. Um. We are required by law to take animals. Have you all had a chance to review this? That's my comments on that.
And how much is the fee, is it based on how many dogs we sign, or is it um, just the fee we pay each year?
Well, there is a, uh, we agreed to pay a annual fee of five thousand dollars a year. Then, um. There's a twenty-five dollar per day warning fee. I think we were paying twenty, or we.
We are, yeah.
We weren't paying twenty, but we've been paying twenty for years.
Yeah, I think we never updated and stuff, but the new people will probably have been paid.
And so it's twenty-five dollars a day. Uh, if the dog owner comes and collects their dog, they will be responsible for that fee. If they don't, we would be responsible, the same as we thought. So Dean thinks it's a good deal, he doesn't know what else we can do, um. Originally, I had heard it was going to be eleven thousand. I'm glad to see it's down to five. Uh. Dean did ask them, um, he works closely with the Hyde Park A C O. And if they can get more towns on board, that fee will go down. It won't be that much at this point. I had suggested on page five. Um. They're talking here about um, if a dog needs a vet nursing service or something, that um they'll reach out to the A C O, but if they can't, then they're just gonna try to that they'll provide the minimum care, I added in there that they should um also reach out to the town, the administrator, or the uh, sled boards here. You know, not just the A C O, because Dean works. He, he on vacation, so I'd like to add that in there too. Hopefully we'll have an administrator, and I would think that that would be the person that, you know, would be more readily available. On that same page, I wasn't sure what um. But I wasn't sure what the confidential information we weren't going to disclose. What kind of confidential information would that be?
Sorry?
That's a question I, uh.
Well, my thinking is, if an animal's chipped.
Uh-huh.
Then they're going to know the owner's name and so forth, so on, so. I think they're just saying, trying to keep the owner's information confidential.
On page six, I suggested that maybe we um if we agree to it, that we start July first, that way it's a new budget and we will know if the voters have approved the money going forward. On the, instead of just give it there, you know, and we can't just. Yeah, the biggest, I don't know. Yeah, but I thought the start page would be the beginning of our fiscal year. Um, we will, we will know that the voters have approved the budget for the year that we're working on. Um, that we can be part, part of this. That's all I really saw that um stuck out. Well, we're going to get the five thousand dollars.
We can just put money in there.
In there. I'll tell you what, you'll send right out on Main Street with a tin cup and a little sign.
I probably make more money than I do at work, I'd be happy to do that.
So does the board feel comfortable moving forward with this or not?
Seems like it's probably a reasonable option with those remarks.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see it really as a choice, we gotta do something, we're obligated by law. Dean can only take one dog, and it's very kind of him to do that.
He has six dogs anyway.
So I'll make a motion that we um, accept the inter-local agreement regarding animal shelter services between the towns of Hyde Park and Yorkville.
Starting in July.
To begin, effective July first of two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
Do you have any other comments? Any none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't carry. Thank you. Um. We have uh Melinda presented with a warranty pound on licensed dogs.
I am down to sixteen, I know there are many families in town who have, I've never registered their dogs, and if they have, um, they no longer do because of COVID. Um. But because some of the dog problems we've had, I don't know if we should ask Dean to just visit them and just remind them that they need to license these dogs? And maybe go to some new families in town that do have dogs and haven't licensed them? One of them walks right up Main Street from the store, and I've tried to talk to that person, and they don't want to talk to me, so. I mean, I don't want to be too forceful. I mean, I don't know if I should be forced, but let me put it that way. I don't know if, if it's something we want to pursue or not.
How many dogs are licensed now?
Oh, I have over four hundred. Um, I have um sixteen on the list there that need to be licensed, and have been licensed in the past, and I'm not really sure why they have re-licensed.
I guess I would leave it up to Dean, some of these, I mean, one time you made a request, Dean, I had to say the dog was deceased.
I don't, oh no, I called all these people.
Yeah, but had we said, the animal was deceased or?
No, I called all of them on the phone. And one of them, I had to keep calling back because his mailbox is full, and I finally got a hold of them, and left a message. If I see them on the phone, if your dog is deceased and you would like me to take you off the list, please give me a call back. No problem. And I started calling about a month ago, I wasn't, you know, I would wait, you know. Some of the people on there actually live on my road, and I talk to them personally, and I just get the feeling that I'm not afforded. You know what I mean, it's, I, I don't think they take me seriously.
Could I ask, how do other towns handle um, dog licensing enforcement, do we know?
Some of them, they don't.
Some of them, and found them.
Some are forceful, some are not, it's a state law, it's not a town law. It's a state law that um, all dogs in that town and that district have to be, have a re- raise, a current rabies vaccination for three years and have to be registered with the town.
It seems ridiculous to have laws if we don't enforce them.
Yeah, you need to send someone out to pick up those dogs and find them. And so when you start getting lax, then people um.
And you're also, but we were lax because.
Yeah.
And towards a bit, we were lax because it was COVID. No, the police did not involve. It's an ordinance with the town and so our animal control officer is the one who's responsible for it. The town gives him a warrant to go pick up all unregistered dogs in the vicinity of the local.
So this is the warrant. That, um, Belinda's asked me to sign.
In the past, some select members felt that we shouldn't do that.
We all snapped on a warrant.
Didn't do it when Kurt was on board. But it's spreading the state law, I know. Um, well.
I think we should do, have Dean pick them up and say if you want the animal. These are fees, the fines.
Excellent. I send out notices, I make calls. At this point, I don't know what else to do.
I think, have Dean do his duty.
And after I did make some calls, some people called me back and let me know, uh, Trina died a year ago. Could have let them know, you know. Like Stephanie Allen came in the other day. Oh yeah, but like, but why? I don't know.
So I'm gonna move forward and sign a warrant to empower license, unlicensed dogs.
And I will give the list to Dean, letting know the warrant. And I told him she made copies of it to take it and then when. He didn't follow or goes to see him.
A possible buyout request on the table there because, uh, people have been decided and they think they might have a.
Well, I want them, they want them Californian, so. Yeah. It's warmer out there all the time. Boy, it's hard for us. The heat is good. I'm not, that's true. I think a living soon. The bay area is covered all year round. The fire is like paradise.
So as you know, I put out, um, notices of vacancies for a lister. Few town physicians, the slide board assistant, um. But I, I had a, uh, request, uh. To make the, I don't know, I was saying.
Medicare, Medicare?
Medicare is, um, I interest.
A A A Y E R? N E T A H, no.
He is interested in serving on the, on the planning commission. Went, so I was. He's been on the school work before.
Yes, he was.
He wants to be involved in the community, um. So he would like us to. M E T A Y E, uh.
Okay. Yeah. Same. Then I thought, is it the name?
One of the boys or one beer or? During the process of, uh, they have a lot of work ahead of them right now. They're about looking on updating the town plan. So I think it would probably be good to have, um. Different voices from different parts of the town that be able to contribute to that discussion. My personal opinion.
I think everybody wants to volunteer, you know, that's.
So we have a motion to appoint two Medicare, Mc- Net.
Medicare, I think it's Medicare. Wendy, Wendy's the, uh, does the plague with here on Monday. That's her husband and she always says it and I can never.
It's taking over the community gardens.
And she's going to do our event? Barbecue event. She's gonna be in charge.
We have a motion to, uh, appoint two.
Make the motion.
You're second.
I'll second.
Motion in second to appoint two Medicare to the planning commission. All those in favor? I propose here. Head man, um. So with all my emails, and sorry to say that I missed one a long time ago, back in May. Um. It's an amendment to the contract of the sales of the Indian to the forest. And they're really bugging me for it, but. The amendment has, um. Has to do with some environmental issues they found on, um. The house site. Uh, that we were gonna give to Habitat for Humanities.
Um, healthy.
Yeah, the, the trailer was broken and so forth, um. And they're doing, uh, roll out in a phase, order two for the state. And corrective action plan. But I'm feeling that this is important and even though they. Wanted it weeks ago, but I sent it to the lawyer to review. I, I don't think it's really something I should do. The warrant. Thomas, if that's all right, I'll send it to the attorney and we'll bring it out to the July. Do you want to meet on the day before work that they hire? The people have plans? Do you want to adjust that or? That meeting, you want to still hold it?
I won't be around.
You will, I'll.
Will you be to be here a few days before, like the Tuesday or no? You gone the whole week?
Leaving the twenty sixth, I'll be back the eighth.
Oh my, that's a long one. So wear warm?
Fully.
It'll be warm. No, not that night. So you can't go with?
My vacation is if I can step out of the house, it's, it's going down.
But you, Ellen, you're taking a vacation.
You want to meet on the third?
That's for me.
Okay. All right, I'll miss you, but I guess I'll meet.
You can zoom.
I'll think of it. Won't be zooming.
It's on vacation. Uh, if we, I have some important papers coming in the meantime, we'll send them to you just the air convene or something, all right? All right, just, I'll do a quick, um. Updates. Uh, they changed the walk into Bear's Long, um, to look at the. That's going to be Saturday at nine AM. If anyone is interested.
Yeah, isn't that cancer walk too? When did they start? The cancer walk? Okay, all right, no problem.
I'll look at the consultation when you send. I wanted to let you know that I met with, um, the project manager. And the engineers designing the Spall Street Bridge this week. I was, um. And. We also met with our engineers to design, uh, flow. The pipe under the bridge. Anyway, the engineer, um. The project manager from the state said that they had pushed. The bridge replacement back to two thousand twenty six. But because there was a positive bomb, they were moving it up to two thousand twenty five, back where it was before. So in two thousand twenty five, they are going to put in the new bridge of Buckman. On Fred Martin's side. You know, up there, I'll be Fred on South Lanley on that side. Um, they will put that in, the road will not need to be closed. And then in two thousand twenty six, um, in the summer, they will. Complete the construction of the bridge. So the road will be closed and we will have to get drive on to the other tunnel there.
They'll talk in a few months.
I don't think it will take that long. It won't take that long because we're closing the road. They're just bringing in.
You know, the train will still have to have flying for fifteen.
Well, I have some threats.
Some of the other.
Right, especially.
Isn't that what you like with Nestle Marshmallow?
Right, Johnson. Johnson replacing some of their smooth pipe. And it's a zoom. Yeah, forty five minute delay.
I think it's about twenty five in Marshville for their baby right now.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Have a good vacation, Michael.
Don't do what I would.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I'm here too. Um, I have not.